Brian, can you hear me?
Hi Dan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we're here for conversation about the County Courthouse, the judicial building renovation.
So who wants to start? Brian, you want to start?
I can start, yes, so good afternoon, I wanted to bring everyone together just to talk through the process since the bid was open and what the DLZ and Skinner team have done, just to bring you up to speed, and then really want to talk about some administrative things going forward, a little bit about schedule, and some things that we talked about, so in short, we do have a, I believe Ellie had sent over the contract for review. We are tracking under budget, we do have a few alternates that we can, that we can talk through as well. But we did deem the response to be both complete and responsible, so we are excited to report that. And so, so yeah, I know you wanted the contract and needed to be signed by, by December thirty first, I think we're, we're comfortable in recommending the contractor with the AIA contract that the DLZ had sent, so wasn't sure, I know it was just sent over, wasn't sure if you had a chance to review or if you had any questions on that upon first glance.
I had just quickly reviewed it, I know I sent it to Joel, I don't know that he has had time to review it as of yet.
I couldn't hear that last part, I don't have the microphones off or...
Oh, he can't hear you talking, I'm sorry.
I just said I'm generally familiar with the AIA forms, and you know, the one thing I always look at is the dispute resolution provision, just because I tend to not want to opt to go through arbitration, and it was checked for litigation if we can't get something resolved, so I'm, I think I'm okay with going forward with this form.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So that was the contract, the schedule, so we had just some discussions around schedule, so right now the contractor is projecting a seven month schedule that likely does not account for weather days or major weather days, I should say, with a mobilization towards the beginning of April, that will allow for submittals to get through, you know, then line up their subcontract, maybe some good weather hits, we'll work closely together with them, our next step with them is to set up essentially a kickoff meeting with them and their team to review kind of next steps from a kickoff onboarding submittals to make sure we're on the same page, so high level April mobilization complete by the end of the year.
And I know Ellie, I think the email was from you asking a few questions about if, because I know you don't want to, I can even move my microphone closer, excuse me. The discussion was, you know, we don't want to have a construction trailer down here on the courthouse lawn, if we were willing to have, if we had an office space that could be utilized. So if you, I don't know if you have access to that email, I can try to pull it up, the different questions that were asked, since we're all three here as well during this process. Yes, we have offices. Are we all in agreement that we have offices that they could, that they could, that they could... Nothing?
She asked, I just answered.
I would agree that we do have office space for them.
We can accommodate that, yes.
Yeah, I'm pulling... And Diana, I called you Ellie, I am so sorry. It's one of those things.
What we'd like to do is if the contract's all right, we know what your wishes are as far as...
Make sure the microphone's turned on, please?
Yeah, it is, I have the green light. That you don't want a trailer out through there with that, at this point, we need to have a conversation with the contractors, see as far as want, you know, the Mason contractor's going to have stuff, with the mechanical contractor's going to have stuff, so at this point, we didn't have anything in there saying that they couldn't have it, but we will accommodate with that, and we'll work with them and try to do things with that, we do know, like you said, you have offices into there, you've got a lot of what I'm calling spaces that are going to be remodeled downstairs, cleaned up, that can be used for storage of materials too with that. So we will work with the contractor and try to keep the exterior as clean as possible.
Oh yeah, correct, we, we're, and my words aren't coming today, fully aware that we're, there's going to be stuff around, but to make it easier for a construction trailer, I mean, that, that's going to be difficult. Parking around here is difficult anyway, if we had a construction trailer, but yeah, I think that, that, I don't think any of that's going to be a problem.
Perfect, great.
Okay, so some of the budget review that we wanted to talk through, we weren't sure how how you wanted to track budget for, we do have some suggestions, obviously, the contractor is born, bound by the contract plans and specifications, but if there are other things, and we can talk through some of these, if there are other things that get introduced throughout the project, how we would suggest tracking overall budget on the county's behalf. So between the two projects, are you, I guess one of our questions we weren't sure about, do you have a budget per project that you are tracking from the overall standpoint?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have that handy where you can, where you can share?
Let me go get some documentation I have in my office and...
Okay. And then in the meantime, I'll pull up some logs and examples of what we would propose.
Henry, when you were talking about needing space for stuff, and you know, we have spaces available as far as, you know, offices, especially in the basement, and there's probably some other areas also, is some of that's going to be larger stuff that's going to have require additional storage, because I was just thinking out loud myself, the, we have a parking lot next street over that we probably could utilize for some of that if possible.
Okay, well, we probably...
If you needed a construction trailer, that might be a possibility there.
Sure, that's a great idea, what we'd like to do is if we get down through this with that, we'll set up a meeting, have it here with the contractor, and go over those items, and they can discuss what their needs are. Thanks.
That was something I just had to think about, we have a, apparently it's not huge, but it's a decent sized parking lot that it may be we could utilize for that.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm reading, sorry, I'm reading through some of these. So when we did the bond, the bond was written for, it was fifty-seven, or five million, seven hundred thousand, I believe five million was budgeted for this, was seven hundred thousand, being the Masonic building and a couple hundred thousand for the Justice Center. This, basing, based upon the project from DLZ, the high range is about four and a half million dollars, four point six million dollars for this building. And then, oh wait, take that back, I added that incorrectly. Four, four point eight million, I added the two wrong, and then the Masonic building is about seven hundred thousand and the Justice Center, or about for the alternate, it's about one point two million, and then the Justice Building, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, is that correct? Does that sound right?
Yes, yeah, the thing, we want to make sure as, as we go through and we go, the contractor submits pay applications with it, that we're starting with knowing what those limits are for each of the projects with that, and then Brian's going to talk about too here with that, if things do come up during construction that are above and beyond what the contractor had in there, whatever, on a remodeling project, there's stuff that come up with that, we just want to make sure how you want to handle that and identify where those monies are coming from.
And, and Brian, when I, and I'm adding these numbers up quickly as I go, but those are the high ranges, we were given a low range and high range, these are all high ranges, so the courthouse is four million, seven seventy-eight, one seventy-five. The Masonic, what we refer to as the Masonic Office Building is one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, and then the Justice Center is two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
And are you needing to have each of those tracked as separate pay applications?
I'm sorry, what did, what did you ask? Separate?
So when we started this, I think the idea was, correct me if I'm wrong, is as we're going through with that, there's money for the courthouse, there's monies for the Masonic Building and Justice Center with that, as we go through pay apps with that, we're going to track those separate. Contractor's going to submit every month to pay apps, one's going to be for this building, one's going to be for the other one with that, and we just want to make sure those, those amounts are with what you're bonding, what you're having to there, that those are aligning with that.
So we have also appropriated art monies, and I don't, I didn't get a chance to get with Debbie, when she gets back, I will, the exact total number that we have. Yeah, with art funding. Yeah, so what the, in order for us to have all the money, art money obligated by year into the buildings, we'll probably start paying out of the art funding first.
Okay.
Get that paid down, and then go into the bond. Because we have, we have to have that money appropriated.
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's anything you need as far as in the pay app, as far as what's from ARP and what's from bond?
No.
Just as long as you...
Because we'll take care of that internally, I'm sorry, there was somebody that come up toward the office, I want to check on them.
That's right, I'm with it, so as long as we're, we're good on that, that as long as those amounts, the bonding is what you're really concerned about, I know when you started with that, that we have that noted, we should be good.
Okay, if I share screens, would you have the ability to see? Let me try.
Know in a second when you do it.
Sharing is not turned on, you can request multiple presenter sharing for this meeting. Okay, I sent a request, if I'm able to share, I'll try to walk through, so we, as mentioned, the contract is bound by plans and specifications, we identified various items that we feel that may be required.
Sorry.
So...
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry, hang on.
So a couple of those items, so corbel replacement, we weren't sure how many were, okay, let's see here. Perfect. So let me share. Okay, perfect, so items that we are anticipating as being potential cost to the project that aren't necessarily currently within the contractor's scope of work, and how we would propose to manage those such that we're not holding up and delaying construction, that's, that's our overall goal, is to manage the overall budget, right now, the contractor's sitting here, but it's that gap in the budget that we want to manage on effectively and efficiently throughout. So we do have unit prices for corbel, corbel replacement and stone repair, as well as a square foot for brick replacement and Masonic, so the, the idea here is we get into construction, maybe we get up there and some of the corbels are in worse shape than we, than we thought, we can count, you know, one, two, three, four, five corbels that need to be replaced, we have their unit price, we're able to then take money from the overall budget and add it to the contractor's contract, issue a change order, and then quickly move through construction, so as to not go way in the back and forth. So what you're seeing here is what we do on our projects with all of our owners is, it's change event log, potential change order log, you know, they would, they would open up something, in a CE or PCO identifying it, labeling what that is, and then we would set dollar amounts kind of placeholders in the overall budget to be able to communicate with you weekly, bi-weekly, of how our overall budget is tracking as we go throughout the project, so a couple of things that we talked about, the brick, the corbel and the stone, but knowing, you know, some of the discussions early on, we did identify between DLZ and Skinner, a number of different areas that could come into play, so existing finishes, upgrades and patching, I know there's one office that the, that the ceiling is going to get higher, so right now it's not known what other work in that office needs to happen, whether that's painting, whether that's extending paneling, so setting a budget aside for, for that, to track off of any mechanical modifications or electrical infrastructure, anything unforeseen that pops up during the job, this could be, this is kind of a catch-all, the contingency bucket that we would probably suggest applying a percent against this, against that lineup, and then I know at one point it was mentioned that the county has resources to basically clear out any of the, of the existing lower level, a lot of these areas that are getting renovated, but in case those resources aren't available, setting dollars aside for any kind of additional demo or clearing or cleaning type of work. So we would suggest tracking one of these logs per project, so I'm just going to use your numbers, Bobby, if your overall for the courthouse was four point seven seven eight million, and the contractor was four point one two five, we would have a potential placeholder starting of six hundred grand in the, in this bucket, and being able to identify those changes throughout, and as we get through construction, maybe after month one, that six hundred grand's down to five ninety, after month two, it's down to five seventy, but this allows you to see kind of how that overall budget tracking is throughout, if that makes sense.
Very much so.
Okay. So we will get this prepared for our next meeting, and then I guess start that budget tracking process accordingly. Just, sorry, I'm looking at another monitor for the agenda, one, one other note on the, because I think we've covered all of our questions, that I did skip over on the design, the low contractor on the windows was Anderson Windows, so we wanted to make sure, I know you had a Pella mockup done, we wanted to make sure that the contractor included mockups for the Anderson, which they did, so the next step will be ordering and getting that mockup done so that you three can go look at it, touch it, make sure it's good, painting, it is a custom color paint, so that is not an issue, we've got that scoped out, but just know that that was something that varied from, it was an acceptable alternate, but it wasn't what was mocked up already, so wanted to make note of that.
And just as a side note, they did come in on Friday, and fixed the, Friday, it was Friday, and fixed the crack, or replaced that where it cracked due to something.
Paint on the windows.
Move, move forward.
Weren't we doing the downstairs windows as the wood grain color for all those? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think so.
That's what I thought we had decided.
The downstairs windows as wood grain color? Oh, okay.
So I thought we were doing all the first four in wood grain. So, and just from my own personal, like I said, I haven't got a chance to look through all the different amounts. What's the difference in ordering all of them with the wood grain finishes opposed to us paying someone to paint them? So that was what my question was, the fact that we're going to wind up paying someone if they come primed, or we're going to pay somebody to paint them also, so if they already come finished?
Well, they're going to be finished. Primed.
That's what I mean, but is that, but is that an additional cost that if we didn't have them painted, then would that cost come off? That's, that's what I was wanting to know, was what's the, what that comparison would be, was what I was curious. Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know what the difference would be, if it's, I don't know.
All right, Steve, are you asking if, if, what the credit would be if they're all unfinished?
Well, not unfinished, but if they have a wood grain finish on them, as far as stain, as opposed to what it would cost to paint. That was my question, because I know originally these were all most likely stained to, to match the, you know, the period of when the courthouse was built, and I think that was kind of what I've heard a lot of the public saying they would like to see it put back to the original appearance, so that's why I was wondering if we're going to pay someone to paint them, if we, so they would look the wood grain, what's the difference in just getting them that way as opposed to painting?
If we could get a cost estimate.
Yep, we could probably help on that. So really, that was our, kind of our first three bullet points on the agenda, next one would be next steps, we would propose to have a kickoff meeting with the contractor the week of the sixth. You, I, I believe you have what you need for the contract to fulfill your twelve thirty-one requirement, and then after the week of the sixth, after we understand their next steps as far as onboarding of subcontractors, submittals, et cetera, we would then get back with you with kind of the next meeting that we would need to have set up.
Is there any concern? There's always concern with supply chain delays, I know it started a couple years ago, you know, that it was taking much longer to get things, we got lucky when we were constructing, well, when again was constructing the, the new jail, we got lucky that all of our stuff come in, and then the supply chain issues occurred, so is there any anticipation of issues with that? And I know you can't guarantee anything.
But we haven't, in our projects currently under construction, we have not been experiencing any of that, anything from the general trades, electrical, or that, I'll take that back, if you want a generator, no, it's going to take you a year and a half to get a generator, but you don't have, with that, that's been about the only thing that's been taking a long term to get. With the fact that they're starting April timeframe right now, the good thing about this is all the submittal process, reviewing and all that, we can get that, and they can get all this stuff ordered with that, anything that they order and purchase and want to get paid for with that, they'll have to have documentation as far as proofs that they paid for, proof that's insured, and showing where it's at also with that, so.
Yeah, ma- major mechanical and electrical equipment is still the volatile piece, which we don't have on this project. Now, I don't know what the terrorists will do, but that's a twenty twenty-five.
We wouldn't get all this in before. Okay, anything else?
Just on a thing as far as you're going to review it and sign it, but then we have to have the contractor sign, I'm conscious on your December thirty first date with that. So once we get that signed from the three of you, we'll get a copy and we'll get it to the contractor with that, and let them know that's got to be back.
So I have, I have read through the contract, I don't know if you guys have, Joel has done a quick review as we're sitting here, and he's, he's good with it. Have you had a chance to review it, Steve, or?
Yes.
I'm sorry, please?
Yeah.
Yep, so I, I don't have a problem unless Joel, that you've seen something that you want changed. It's pretty standard. Okay. So I will make the motion to accept the con, AIA document one, A one zero one dash two zero one seven, the contract between the Henry County Board of Commissioners and Able Construction Company for the project with the Henry County Courthouse Office Building and Judicial Center.
We get a discount if we second it immediately? Because I'm always about saving us some money, and hey, the more we save, the more things we'll actually do with the extra that you save us.
Yeah.
With that, I'll second it.
Motion's been made, and second rule, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Does anybody have anything else? This went much quicker than what I anticipated it would.
It's okay, should we, logistics, should we direct the contractor to come into the auditor's office to countersign it this week?
That probably would be best.
Okay.
And we'll have it with Debbie, sorry, I'll get...
No, you're good.
We'll have it, yes, we'll have it in the auditor's office with Debbie, for her to countersign, and then we'll get copies to everybody.
Okay, we will direct them to come in Wednesday or Thursday, would be ready?
They're here Tuesday through Friday.
Okay.
Today, obviously, but Tuesday through Friday, eight to four.
Okay, we will send them in.
Okay. Anybody else have anything, Joe, Steve? Anybody else have anything? Joe, Steve? Joel, you, you're good. Do you guys have, Diana? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion's been made. Second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Merry Christmas.